One. All right, go ahead and call the meeting to order if we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Over there.
We'll go straight ahead.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call, please.
Mrs. Bloom, here. Mrs. Spear too, here. Ms. Laird, here. Ms. Lewis, here. Mr. Price.
Here. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from our regular meeting on from July 24th, 2023, please?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Laird, could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Spear too. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Laird, yes. Mrs. Spear too, yes. Mrs. Bloom, yes. Ms. Lewis, yes. Mr. Price.
Yes, motions approved. Legislative report.
None this evening.
Okay. We do have one walk-on item. You should have an extra piece of paper at your spot. It'll be listed as item nine under staff. So when we get to that, we'll have that walk-on item. Other than that, no other walk-on items?
No, sir, that is all.
Okay. Moving on to the community, if there's anyone here who'd like to address the board, they can come up to the podium to speak. Don't think we have anyone that's going to talk tonight, so we'll go ahead and skip to superintendent's report.
Thank you very much, Mr. Price. Good evening, everyone. Just a few things I'd like to kind of talk about before we get into our agenda this evening. Excuse me. The first one is on September 11th, we have a board meeting and there's also a home middle school volleyball game that night. So it's a little, we got a little concession stand over here. I mean, it might, it's a little bit disruptive for our meeting. My recommendation is maybe we move to the PAC that evening, but I thought I'd ask the board what your pleasure is on that. Would that be okay if we move to the PAC? Any issues? Okay, we'll get that publicized so that we're, we're all set for that. Also, I will remind you and invite you to our August 23rd district opening day in the PAC. I think it's going to be a good day. Now, just a little different than last time, we had breakfast and then went into the PAC. We're going to start a little later and have lunch served. So it'll be a nine o'clock start. That's Wednesday, the 23rd. So a week from Wednesday, here at the high school in the PAC, is our staff opening day. So all 550 of us in there celebrating the beginning of school. So invite you to come and enjoy the day. And I'd like to introduce you as a part of that program. All right. At our last meeting, we talked about OSBA, Ohio School Board Association training. So I contacted, her name just jumped out of my head. She's been here many times. Carrie? Sherry?
I know. It's on the tip of my tongue, too. And I-
Anyway, I called her. And she said that she would love to do it. She, she likes working with us, has been up here several times. She kind of gave us three options for, for training. She said, since we have potentially three turnover seats in January, she said she could come up and do a training with this current board and then do a training with the new board. She also thought that one option would be to train with this board and then have the new members attend their Board 101 trainings that are offered for every new board member in the state. Or the third option was to maybe wait as a group and have then the new training for the, the, the board that starts in January. So I just need a recommendation from you, what you'd like me to? Harry Morgan. Thank you.
Trying to look it up real quick.
Terry Morgan. Yeah, we remember Terry. Anybody, any thoughts?
Anybody?
If she wants to do it with everybody in one shot, then we can wait. But it's better for the new people to go do it the other way.
I think it's important for the new members that haven't had it to have it as soon as possible because I mean, I think it's something that you should do right away.
Okay.
And we shouldn't wait.
I could maybe get her right away, maybe book her as quickly as possible in January for the new board? Okay. No objections? All right. That's what we'll do. All right. One of the things, just kind of facility-wise, I think noteworthy, we've made a drastic improvement in our fleet of buses. And I know that we've talked about buses for a while, but we didn't buy buses for a few years because we just didn't have a lot of cash extra. So over the last 18 months or so, we've purchased nine buses to really get our fleet back up to where it ought to be. So I just want to make sure that you knew that. And I'm just proud that we were able to do that. Now, I think three of those buses, Mr. Amway, are used, but, but slightly used. So we got a good price on those, about a third of the price of new on those. So we're pretty excited about that. So that's that. Then the last thing is policy KJA is on the agenda for this evening. I, I sent you a kind of reworded version of that. So I thought, just so you know, that's coming. It's on the agenda. We can kind of chew on that when we get there. Okay?
Yeah.
That's all I had. Anybody anything for me this evening? Okay, super. I proceed?
Yes, sir.
All right. All right. And facilities and operations in our first section is donations. Item one, we have David Lopez donated a football purple jacket from 1969. I saw this. It's beautiful. It's wool, heavy jacket. Mr. Hensa wore it to our principal's opening day. It was priceless. But it's beautiful, purple jacket from 1969. So we thank Mr. Lopez for that. We'll find a good place for it for sure. And then also in our, from the history department, right? Some old yearbooks, programs, directories, and so forth, from Tom Stout. Those are our donations for this evening.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve item one, please?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Lewis, could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Bloom. Any discussion?
I might suggest that the football jacket, whenever the Hall of Fame hallway-
Yeah.
Gets-
Sure.
Completed. What was the jacket from?
It was, it was a evening, like it wasn't an outdoor coat. It was a, it was a sports coat. Thank you. It was a sports coat. Yeah.
I saw a picture of Mr. Hensa with it on.
It was a good fit.
But was it like a, not like a Letterman's jacket?
No. It was like, just how may they have, may have worn it to school as a treat? I don't really know the story. I can do a little research and see.
Yeah, we'll have to find out some. That would be neat to put with the jacket.
Yeah, absolutely. That's neat.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Mrs. Spear too?
Yes.
Ms. Laird?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes, motions approved.
Thank you very much. Item two, consider the approval of contract for Fremont City School Resource Officers. Just note, this is two of them with the city.
Can I get a motion to approve item two, please?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Bloom. Have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Laird. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Laird?
Yes.
Mrs. Spear too?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes, motions approved.
Thank you very much. And then item three is the same kind of item for the county. So we have the same one school resource officer from the sheriff's department, please.
Can I get a motion to approve item three, please?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Lewis, could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Spear too. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. Spear too?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Laird?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes, motions approved.
Okay, I just, those two items, I think are two of the best things we've done for the safety of our students, really, and maybe in the history of the district. So thank you very much for those. That's a good group. We've got a fabulous partnership with both agencies. Item four is our policy KGA, the distribution of literature.
Can I get a motion to approve item four, please?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Laird, could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Spear too. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Laird?
Yes.
Mrs. Spear too?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes, motions approved.
Thank you very much. And that, notice that is a first reading, so we'll have that one again next meeting. Thank you. Item five, second reading on this one. This one had just a cleanup language on our policy for dress code. There were still a few campus wear phrases that weren't appropriate longer. So that was just the removal of those. So this is our second reading for item five tonight.
Can I get a motion to approve item five, please?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Bloom, could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Lewis. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. Spear too?
Yes.
Ms. Laird?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes, motions approved.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item six, consider the approval to grant a Ross High School diploma to Anavrin Clyde Godfrey. This met his graduation requirements and is committed to the US Navy as his graduation pathway. So we kind of scrambled quickly to help this happen so he could be off. So with your approval.
Can I get a motion to approve item six, please?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Laird, could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Spear too. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Laird?
Yes.
Mrs. Spear too?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes, motions approved.
Thank you very much. Item seven, approval of student handbooks. I went over that this morning with Gina and all the edits. And it's basically, there's some cleanup language, truly some changes from spelling, some indentations, some phraseology, no, no significant changes from last year in our student handbook.
Can I get a motion to approve item seven, please?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Spear too. Have a second?
Second.
Second by, excuse me, second by Mrs. Bloom. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Spear too?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Laird?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes, motions approved.
All right, we have a few resignations tonight. Hilda Martinez, custodial one, Ashley Reyna as a bus driver, and Faye Stiltner as a cook. If I could, oh wait, continue on, I'm sorry. No, no roll call there. Item nine, administrative substitute. You'll see a familiar name there. Mr. Mackel has agreed to be on the substitute list. That's all we can talk him into. And Judith Snorf, Snorf has helped us quite a bit in the last few years. She's actually a retired administrator out of Tuleo Public Schools. Does a great job when we need her. So fabulous, fabulous help. Then there's a rather lengthy list, thankfully, for certified staff substitutes in item A. Item B, custodial one, approval for Kendra Pravard with your approval tonight. Next item there is support staff substitutes, a list that isn't as long as we'd like it to be, but we do have a few people willing to help us. Then if I could draw the board's attention to our walk-on item, which is a new kindergarten teacher at Atkinson. We had enough kindergarten enrollments to make that position viable. We had left it open, not knowing what it would be, but we've had enough recent kindergarten admissions to Atkinson to justify a third section there. So should be all set with your approval. Item 10, a new administrative appointment for our really last professional position that we had open from the summer. Shinon Jaquay will be our new school psychologist. We're very excited to have her on board. Item 11, with your approval, we'll have these extended days, five days for that list of folks to help get ready for school. Item 12, supplemental contract for Mr. Shell. He'd like to help build the set for this fall's musical. He's, I know, volunteered quite a bit in the past, so we get him on there and make it official. Item 13, supplemental duty position. If you turn to the top of the next page, it starts there. You see quite a few fall assistants for several of our activities. Then you will notice that head wrestling is on there. Head wrestling then will allow us to then start working on the assistant coaches that we'll approve as we get closer to that season. Item 14, special event workers, seat ticket scanners and statisticians, and then for middle school, athletic workers, scoreboard operators and the like. So you recognize a lot of familiar names on that list. Turning the page, item 15, continuing the special event worker. Tom Thompson has agreed to be a lifeguard for us. Item 16, OBI, those are our onboard instructors. Those are the, our own bus drivers who get additional training to become trainers. So then they ride, much like a student driver needs a certified driver. That's our onboard instructor. So those three will be approved tonight with, if you were-
Me too.
Actually, we're keeping one. We're keeping Ashley.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. She's going to stay on as a, even though Ashley has resigned as a driver, she's going to stay on as an instructor and maybe do some evening activities and things for us. So. Item 17, then the status changes for tonight. Jacqueline Atkins, Amelia Lewis, Caitlin Shanair, Miranda Wamas, and Michael Ikas. Those are our personnel items for this evening.
Can I get a motion to approve items eight through 17, please?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Lewis. Have a second? Second by Ms. Laird. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Laird?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Mrs. Spear too?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes, motions approved.
Thank you very much. Item 18 is the approval of our administrative staff substitute wages. That's for principal, basically, substitute. That is the same as it's been. So if your approval, we'll continue that price.
Can I get a motion to approve item 18, please?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Bloom, could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Spear too. Any discussion?
Is that wage competitive still?
Yeah, that's good enough to get people. And that's, I think, the ultimate question. Yes. Thanks, Ms. Lewis. Yes.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Mrs. Spear too?
Yes.
Ms. Laird?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes, motions approved.
And just on that note, Ms. Lewis, that's, that's, that couple of days here and a couple of days there. If we would have ever an extended thing, we'd probably do more of a contract for a different kind of situation. But that truly is designed just to be that, hey, Thursday and Friday, can you cover Atkinson or something like that?
Certainly. Thank you for that.
Certainly. Item 20, substitute wages. I would like to make note, we had one, actually two corrections on this staff substitute wages, support staff. And, and they're both in a positive direction. So the bus driver went from 17.50, I think, to 18. And then the substitute employee for trip van drivers went from, I'm sorry, bus drivers went also from 17.50 to 18, something like that, wasn't it?
It was like 17.83.
Okay. So it was just about 17 cents or something. We had just missed a calculation. So it's, I've got it on my sheet, and it's the only difference in there. It was a calculation error we caught before tonight. So with your approval, with those two changes, we'll approve our support staff substitute wages.
Need to do item 19 first, though.
Okay. I blew right past it. How about 19 before 20?
For the certified staff substitute.
Thank you very much. That also is the same. And we will pay them. So yeah, let's, let's get this done. I'd really be in trouble, wouldn't I? With your approval, we'll keep those the same.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve item 19, please?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Laird, second by Mrs. Lewis, or Ms. Lewis, sorry. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Laird?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Mrs. Spear too?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes, motions approved.
Thank you. And now, all that, that I said before?
Bus drivers and everything else.
Thank you.
Can I get a motion to approve item 20, please?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Bloom, could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Spear too. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Mrs. Spear too?
Yes.
Ms. Laird?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes, motions approved. All right, moving on to report of the treasure.
Good evening. I'm sure you're all super excited that I'm finally at a board meeting. Decided to take July off, oddly enough. So tonight I have the two different financial reports for the end of the year in June, and then our July month-end financials as well. Just a couple of things real quick to highlight on both of them. If you look over the very just general, our year-to-date revenues versus our year-to-date expenses, it'll look like it was about less than a million. But just please make sure to remember that we put $2.5 million in the capital improvement or capital expenditure and the severance fund. And those look like expenditures. So we did end the year very well. So we made that decision to save ahead for the future. So, well, it looks like we just came in just under with expenses this year. We actually did really well. And that's very much made happen by Mr. Dotweiler and our directors. They've been very on top of their, our keeping, making sure expenses stay down. So just wanted to highlight that. We did very good for the fiscal year end.
Matter of fact, if I may, when I saw the increase in, in expenditures, I ran down the hall and said, wait a minute, this looks a little high. She had to explain to me that they represented that money we had set aside for those two things, which I was happy to hear. So, yeah, I was a little scared.
And then just on a couple of our other funds, food service is, has a very good ending balance for this year. In fact, I talked with our food service, our child nutrition supervisor, Tracy, and said, we might have to get those expenses down, or that revenue down a little bit, because that is getting a little high on our cash balance. They only like us to have so much in there. And 1.3 million's getting a little high, but, so.
And that's something we can't spend on anything else, right? There's no transferability or anything.
That's all has to stand food service. So, but of course, with inflation, we might not have to do anything. That might just settle itself. And as our funds have been being used very well, we are in the last year of it. This year, we spent $4.3 million last year, and I believe we have right around $2 million left to spend to finish that out. So we have to be done by the end of this year with those expenditures. So we have quite a few things we're ending our projects on in those different funds. So that looked really good for the end of June. I'm very happy with how our cash was for the end of the fiscal year. And now the starting of the next fiscal year with July. There, it's that real estate tax timing really throws off the financials on a month-to-month basis. It will even out. Last year, we got two advances in the month of July and this final settlement in August. So it looked like our revenues this year looked a lot lower in real estate taxes because we only got one advance in July and then another advance in August and then the settlement in August. So after August is done, the real estate will look much more in line with the first two months. But it's always that July and August timing, there's just a little bit of difference as to when that money hits. So nothing to be concerned about. Our real estate taxes are not extremely low. It's just a timing issue. So those are the two things I have for tonight. Remember, if we put them on those separate? Nope. So if I could have your guys' approval on the June and July financials.
Okay. First off, can I have a motion to approve item 21, please?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Laird. Have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Spear too. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Laird?
Yes.
Mrs. Spear too?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes, motions approved. Then for the July 2024 financial report, 2020, it should be-
Fiscal '24.
Yep. Oh, fiscal, yeah, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah. Sorry.
I'm reading.
We ended fiscal '23 and now we're into fiscal '24.
My mistake. Can I get a motion? I just keep it. Can I get a motion to approve item 22, please?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Bloom, could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Lewis. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. Spear too?
Yes.
Ms. Laird?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes, motions approved. All right, moving on to board member communications. Lori?
Um, well, congratulations to Mr. Godfrey for getting his diploma and working hard towards that. And thank you for your service for going into the Navy. I mean, that's a big decision, a big choice. And the jacket, yearbooks, programs, all that, that's going to be neat to see, to be put, that could even be put in with the hallway thing, the books and stuff.
Sure.
And all the people that are willing to be subs and to help out, and all the people that we're hiring, that we're bringing in, that's to get our staff up. And then Megan, thank you for your report.
Any else?
I'd also like to congratulate Mr. Godfrey for his diploma. And the staff looks like, it looks good to start-
Yes.
The year out.
Yes.
Yeah. And I want to ask, today was the last day for meals?
Yes, correct.
How did that go?
Yep, went very well. About 500 meals again today.
Wow. Wow. That's really good.
Amazing.
Okay, Chantel?
I'd also like to congratulate Mr. Godfrey and thank him for his service. And thank you to all the subs, event workers, Mr. Shell, for building the sets. Those things are so needed and they make a big difference in being able to provide a general school day, plus those extra things that kids love. So much appreciated.
Sarah?
Had the opportunity to attend the ribbon cutting at the Bertrand Library with Mr. Dotweiler. That was a great experience. It's always nice to hear some of the history that we forget about when we've lived here in the, in the town, you know. So lots of history to hear. Mr. Dotweiler, you did a great job-
Thank you.
-representing the, the school district with your own history with the, with the schools.
You know, we sold that to them for a dollar. And I thought, we should buy it back for two. They'd make a dollar, or they'd make 100% profit. We'd get this great spot. But no, I doubt.
Somehow, I don't think they'd go for that.
Probably not.
So congratulations to all of the, the staff and the board of the, the library and their beautiful space. Just kind of a plug, I guess, for, for parents. It's the time of the year where we're all out school supply shopping. If you are a parent in need, or you know any parents that are in need of assistance with getting school supplies, there are plenty of people, agencies, churches, service groups that are willing to help and, and donate free of charge, no questions asked. So please make yourself available to get, to get the help that's out there for people. Another little, I guess, plug for the, for the school, a tool that I use as a parent a lot is Progress Book. Those parents who want to know what's going on with their kids at school, I encourage you to be nosy and use Progress Book. And if you don't know how, I'm sure you can contact any building administrator and they'd be happy to teach you how to use Progress Book. That information is, it's a wealth of information. You can find out what homework is missing and how your child's doing in class and, and how to contact teachers and, and team members. So I would encourage you all to become familiar with that. Same thing with school lunches and everybody's kind of just a little bit. But if you don't know how to use the online pay-for-school lunches, or you need assistance setting that up, get in touch with your child's building administrator. We'd rather help you out on the front end of things before it gets, becomes a problem. So if you need help, definitely contact your, your building administrator. Congratulations to Mr. Gradfrey on, on your diploma. And thank you for your future service. Good luck to all of the, the fall sports teams. This is my favorite part of the year where we get to get back into the kids' lives and interacting with the kids and seeing things happen. So congratulations and good luck to all the fall sports teams, including the marching band. We're excited to see them as well. Thank you to all the volunteers that help make all these things happen for kids in our community. And thanks to everybody who helped with the, the summer meal program. I know that was a, a big undertaking and a lot of people volunteered to get meals to kids and families over the summertime where there may have been an issue doing so. So thank you.
Um, I'll reiterate, congratulations to Mr. Godfrey on his diploma and thank you for your service for the, to the country. New school year coming up. It's a bad word around my house, being married to a teacher, but it's a new school year coming up. I'm ready for the three ladies in my house to get back to work or get back to school. So good luck to all the teachers and administration as they get ready for this new school year. I hope it's a great year for everybody. Like Sarah said, fall sports, football's my sport. Friday night at home, everybody needs to be there. Let's support our little Giants as we start a new season here against Tiffin. Get everybody out there, support the marching band. Can't wait to see them on the field again, too. And for all the other fall sports that are starting up here and gearing up, ready to go. Good luck to them. And for all the others, fall sports that are, that are starting up here and gearing up, ready to go. Um, good luck to them this season. Last thing was I had the privilege of attending a wedding of one of our staff members, Juliana, who is a school counselor at Otis. So congratulations to Juliana and Alfie Jordan. Um, they were married on Saturday. So he came from across the pond. He's originally from England, so he now lives in the great state and city of Fremont or in this area. So.
He's not taking her away from us, is he?
No, they are staying here. Yes, they are staying here. So, yes. So with that, um, I would like to make a motion for us to move into executive session under item N as in Nancy. Could I have a second, please?
Uh, could I modify it and add item D to it as well?
Yes. So we will be going under executive session under item D as in dog and N as in Nancy. Can I, do you like the second? Second by Ms. Laird. Any discussion on that? Um, just real quick for the public to know, there will be no board business taken after the executive session. We'll just immediately come out of executive session and adjourn with that. So no new business will be done afterwards. So. All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Ms. Laird?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Mrs. Spear to?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Motions approved. We're into executive session now.